Good evening. Calling the school committee to order for Thursday, April 6th. Six thirty-five P M. First order of business is the statement regarding recording.
This meeting will be recorded and will be posted to YouTube and other social media platforms. By participating in this meeting, you understand that the recording could contain your video stream or your audio stream, including images of yourself or anyone in the room with you. If you choose to enable your video or audio device during the meeting, as well as anything or anyone else that may be in the background could be recorded. The recording could include any opinions you contribute and anything you say about yourself. On occasion, chat within the meeting could also be captured in the meeting recording. Therefore, anyone attending the recorded meeting may have aspects of their personal data recorded if they actively participate or not.
Thank you. And roll call for attendance, please.
Dr. Allen?
Yep.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Dayshamps?
Yes.
Mr. Willannon?
Preston.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Here.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Here.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggler?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah.
Mr. Nutter?
Sir.
Mr. Jean-François? Chairman Brophy?
Here.
Okay.
On the agenda this evening, need to move a couple of items. Our first item, there's no objection. Very many school committee members. We're going to go into a request for executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And then we'll return to open session. And we'll be moving towards the ratification of the Q R T A collective bargaining agreement. Of two thousand twenty-three, twenty-six.
Almost seconded.
Okay, so there's no objection. And moved, seconded. And roll call to go in executive session. We figure about a half hour, forty-five minutes. That's what we're trying to predict, but we'll see how it goes. No, no time limit on it. Roll call for executive session, please.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Dayshamps?
Yes.
Mr. Willannon?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Jean-François is here at the moment, and Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Okay, I'll close the door and we'll go.
Don't wonder already.
Okay. So who do we have remotely? Emily? Dave? And Jenna?
And Mr. McDonald.
Okay. No one else is in?
Not yet, we haven't moved into, Andrew hasn't moved us into the
Breakout room?
The breakout room, but I would like, if possible, Mr. Wyman to also be included in executive session. He was a part of our team for negotiation.
Not a problem.
Andrew, can you move us into a breakout room? Okay.
It was very fascinating.
Okay.
Went up to system engineering today. Oh, did you? Was it good? Yeah.
School committee. Regular school committee back in order from executive session. Before I go to back in the agenda. Again, as I mentioned, there were a couple of changes that we did, and again, thank you colleagues for the adjustment. We're now out of executive session and we're moving right to the ratification of the Q R T A collective bargaining agreement for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-six. I'm going to turn it over to Dave. You can give a motion if you'd like. Yes.
Okay, I move that the Quavon Regional School Committee ratify the summary of agreement to the successive contract for the Quavon Regional Teachers Association for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing, hearing none? Roll call? Please.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Dayshamps?
Yes.
Mr. Willannon?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Jean-François?
Yes.
McWeston? And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Again, thank you for that. Sorry for the length to the public. We had to have an executive session, but we're back into the full regular agenda. We will do the approval of minutes and then if my colleagues do not object, I'd like to do the student advisory council right thereafter. Any objections?
Move approval of minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Is there, okay, approval of minutes and second, you have it at, are there any further discussion, any omissions, deletions? Corrections? Seeing and hearing none, roll call.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Dayshamps?
Yes.
Mr. Willannon?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Jean-François?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. And again, student advisory council, we'll do that next. Dr. Yor.
We have two students joining us tonight. I will let you introduce yourselves. I know, I think we have Ella and we, we had some students who couldn't make it because of the delay. So I think we have Ella Reeves and Troy Boudreau, is that correct? Okay. And they're going to tell us a little bit about things that are happening in the middle school. So I know you have a slide, would you like me to put your slide on the screen? Okay. One second here. There you go.
Do you want to speak first?
Yeah. Hi, everybody. My name is Ella Reeves and I'm an eighth grade student here at Quavon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you and I'm very excited to share my experience. I'm a school choice student and I'm so thankful that I'm able to attend school here. The academics have been amazing as the school has worked to always give me a challenge. I have learned so many things like how our government is set up, how to write a good essay, and how different types of weather it caused. However, my favorite subject is math. Quavon has helped me grow my knowledge by letting me take classes in the high school. That has been an amazing experience and I'm extremely grateful for that. Along with my classes, I also do a variety of sports and extracurriculars. I swim competitively for my local YMCA, have played soccer for the JV girls team, and run track and field for the middle schools. The coaches for both soccer and track have been great, always extremely nice and skilled at helping my team and I have fun and improve. I'm so happy that I'm able to participate in sports here at Quavon. I really enjoy them and they've helped me grow as a person and an athlete. I enjoy doing not just sports, but also extracurricular activities. One of them that I really enjoy is playing piano in the orchestra. Although I may not be the best at tuning a violin, I do enjoy learning many different pieces of music with my friends. Orchestra has been such a fun and rewarding experience and it is, as it is the best feeling when everything we have been working for comes together at the concert. Another extracurricular that I recently joined is the National Junior Honor Society. I was recently inducted into the NJHS and I'm so excited for what we'll be doing in the near future. Another thing I am really looking forward to is the eighth grade's upcoming DC trip. I'm so excited to see all the museums and memorials and learn more about the capital of the United States. I'm so grateful that this school has given other students me the opportunity to go on this trip. It will be a truly amazing experience. Thank you again for letting me share my experiences tonight. I'm so appreciative of all the great opportunities I've been given and amazing teachers and staff here at Quavon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Any questions?
Hi, you said you were a school choice in. What attracted you to this district?
Definitely the academics was a big part. I feel like Quavon has better academics than some of the other schools in my area. And also sports, sports teams are a pretty good year.
Thank you, you did a great job.
Anything else?
Ella, have you been to DC before or is this your first time?
This will be my first time and I'm really excited for that.
Ella, I'm going to go as a chaperone, you're not in my group, but I already got my, my assignment, but what bus are you on?
I think I'm on bus two.
Okay. You'll have a blast.
Yes.
Can I tell you something about Ella that she didn't know until she got here tonight? Ella entered, a number of students from Quavon entered a contest with the insurance industry for arson prevention posters. And Ellen won first place for Worcester County. Congratulations.
All right, my name is, oh, I'm a little shaky, I was not too prepared.
You're fine.
That's all right. All right, my name is Troy. I do three sports, I do track, indoor track, and then I do golf. I did play baseball last year, that was pretty fun. Um. I made honors first two trimesters and I'm looking to do that for the last trimester. I think in the next upcoming weeks, we are picking our classes, so I'm excited for that. One of my favorite classes, like Ella, I really enjoy math. Um, another thing, I really like our electives here. I don't know if you guys know Mr. Youngberg, sorry, I'm a little shaky.
We can't even, we can't even tell that you're shaky, we can't tell.
There are a lot of shaky people here.
Mr. Youngberg, I gotta say, he is like an amazing teacher. He teaches intro to IP classes and that was like one of the most favorite, like that was my favorite class I've done all year. Such a good teacher. Um. Do you guys have any questions? I mean.
I just have a comment.
Absolutely.
The fact that you both said you love math. And I'm an English teacher, by the way, but I'm not insulted. I think that's wonderful. Who don't hear that too often, you know? You don't hear students say that they love math all too often, so I think that's great.
I think that our freshman teachers or just our teachers in general, math. The math department, I would say, is our strongest department at Quavon. I mean, Ms. Trumbull, Ms. Carter, Ms. Pakkinen, some of the best teachers that I know. I know Ms. Pakkinen. I haven't had Mr. Go. Ms. Pakkinen's a golf teacher, I mean, like she, she treats you as a friend, she's nice to you like a friend, but then she also is a very good helper, she's a good teacher. Same with Ms. Trumbull, girls, middle school track coach, I really like her, she's very nice, she jokes around with kids. She, she really makes people feel comfortable in the classroom and I think that's how I've kind of developed as a person with her help and other teachers out wanting to help us.
Talk to Alan.
Yeah, you guys are the reason we're here. And do what we do. And work as hard as we do. And don't give in. If we can avoid it to cut the budget, cut the, oh, you guys are, you know, you gotta cut, 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 cut. But we want you to have the music and the sports and the, the other things that you're talking about, the trips to Washington. There'll be other trips down the line, Rotse is going to Europe next year. And we had a German crew here, not much older than you, from Berlin basketball group for a week and next year, some of our kids are going over there. And it's a whole world. And you need to be ready for that and need to see it and understand it. And this committee and administration and the faculty and all understand that. And that's why we do what we do the way we do, it's because of guys like you. So thank you to the two of you.
Any other comments or questions? I have a couple that I always ask students when they come. You mentioned what you like. We also like to learn what we can improve on. So seriously, two things. A, for the couple of years, past two or three years with flex block, I'd like to know, was that a worthwhile experience and the way the schedule is, because we're making adjustments with the schedule? And second, what would you recommend we improve or what would you see more of?
Yeah. Okay. Um, so I guess I'll start with what I think that you can improve. I think that it would be nice if the high school had like more honors classes, especially ninth grade. Because when I've been signing up for classes and stuff, the only honors class is like math and I'm already going to be in a different
Here anyway.
So it's just gonna be all
That's something we've been working. When we went through the schedule for the coming year, we reflected back when we started trying to add more of this, you're right. We had two. And we now have about eighteen or twenty. So we're in sync with you on that one.
We also have the, and if you look at AP IB if you'd like as well.
Yeah.
Because we've, we've always, we've tried to give more opportunities for all kids. So there are times that you can go in, push yourself a little more if you want, but those are other opportunities. That's why I'm glad that we are listening to students of what we need and that type of thing. In regards to the flex block and the relationships that learning, teaching and learning is all about, how was that?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I absolutely love having flex block at the beginning of the day. I've got to say that, I feel like that was the smart thing to do because I mean, you'll look at, I mean, you look at some kids and they go home, just toss their papers in their bags and then you come to school and you're like, oh, I have homework, I have homework, I have this to do, I have this. And it really gives you like an opportunity to actually like pass in work. And improvements. I don't like S E L. I don't know if you guys are like responsible for S E L.
We kinda are. We kinda are.
Necessarily big fan of it. Like S E L, I feel like what you guys are reaching for, I feel like that's a good idea. You guys, you guys have a goal in mind, I feel like you are on the wrong path though. I, I feel like instead of, instead of like looking at a screen and like you're, you're thinking about it, instead of looking at a screen, why don't you like talk to us?
Oh, that's what I want, thank you. That's what I wanted to hear, thank you.
Stay tuned.
Yes, thank you.
That will be what happens next year. So we, we heard, we heard many students give us that feedback and so I think you will see some positive change next year.
Yeah, I think S E L is definitely a good thing to have in our classes, but I feel like the way it's not really like, students aren't really responding to it. Because when I always go to like flex block for S E L, everybody's like, oh, it's S E L day and nobody answers the questions. People just click through the slides and they're like, I'm done, I'm done. So I feel like that it's, it's a really good idea, but I think we need like a different way to do it.
Thank you, that's exactly what we need to hear.
What is S E L?
Ask them.
Um, I'm going to be completely honest. I thought you were going to feel like I'm basically a kind of more on the negative side of S E L. S E L is where you basically have like a presentation kind of like put in front of you and you kind of are responsible for going through it. And I wouldn't say it's like necessarily guided, but it's like it has goals where it's like, I know there's one week it was about drugs, not doing drugs, but safety and that's the one of other people. I think I missed last S E L, so yesterday. Um. But it's like a slideshow and there's goals in mind that you have to like kind of look at. And it's kind of like, it's just, it's just like telling you not to do, it's like, don't do drugs.
So was there discussion between the kids after you see the slides or you just walk out?
Just, you're in your flex block, I feel like you sit down, you're you put your Chromebook, you go through your S E L and then you do homework. I feel like, I feel like S E L is, you try to get, get it over with, so you're like, oh, I have this math paper I have to do. I, I have to quiz review, quiz corrections, like have to do this and so you're like, try to push that aside always.
Okay, so what percentage of the kids in your classes leave the same site?
I would say like ninety percent.
Yeah. Yeah, every time I've been in flex block for S E L, just click through it and they're like, okay, now it's time for stuff that I actually need to get done. Instead of spending the whole block like actually watching the videos and stuff.
Thank you.
Like the Ted Lasso video at least, did you see that? That was one of, that was one of the Bayroungs who guided us through it. We actually had discussions and stuff, great.
Yes.
I just have one more quick thing I want to ask you about. Do you find a lot of students being distracted by cell phones and earbuds? Tell me about that type of thing going on.
From my personal experience?
Yeah.
I think music helps me.
Okay.
I mean, it kind of like just blocks out everyone else, I'm listening to music, like Ms. Carter, I don't, I don't want to snitch on her, but she, she lets us listen to music on quizzes and like, just like that, I don't know if that's like
That's okay, yeah.
Widely accepted by you guys, the higher ups. But like it, it helps me, I mean, I, you listen, you like focus, you're like, I mean, obviously not like learning music, but like just listening to music, it's like your own comfort kind of thing. Because you go to school and you're, I feel like you have to be somewhat uncomfortable at school because it's not like, you're not like, I don't know how to describe this. So it's like a, it's a weird feeling, you're like, go to school and you just, you try to get it over with so you want to be as comfortable as possible. And I feel like music kind of helps that, that, earbuds kind of helps with that, listening to a podcast, like stuff like that, I think. And cell phones, I feel like not a lot of kids are distracted by cell phones. I mean, like obviously there is like cellphone usage, I feel like you guys can't really get rid of that as much as you guys tried because everybody is Snapchatting, everyone's texting. So, um, I mean, it is somewhat of a problem, but like I think the majority of people know when it's time to put their phone away. It's time to do this, time to like get work done, so.
That's good to hear.
What kind of music do you like?
Um. There's been controversy with this person, I do like Kanye a lot. Something right now, like with Tim, I like that, so. Um. And Coldplay, I like Coldplay.
Okay. Can I make a recommendation? The soundtrack track from the movie Last of the Mohicans?
All right, I'll, I'll definitely listen to that.
And I just wanted to say, thank you. We love to hear from you, we are making adjustments. Your point was well taken about your intent. You have good intents, we know what we're doing on that. We need some tweaking and everything else. And what you just said about what learning, what's needed for learning and what comfortability is, that's neurodiversity. And that's what's needed for kids to be successful, as well adults. So you are, and I hear, and we hear you, that you, you want to be involved and have good habits of learning and things like that. And not just the onesie of saying, go on the computer and do this and check a box. Because a check a box is not good habits. So thank you for sharing that with us. Truly, anybody else?
It was great listening.
Yeah.
You did want her to. I just wanted to know that Ms. Hicks and Ms. Di Maria's are with us virtually and they are both very proud of you tonight. So they, they are here supporting you from, from afar, so, and thank you very much, you did a wonderful job.
Thank you guys.
Good.
Very helpful.
More than welcome. Okay. All right, back to the agenda and thank you for the adjustments, administrative reports, superintendent of schools.
All right, I will be brief, we are continuing to finalize strategic planning. As you know, we have hoped to have this wrapped up by now, but we do have one final meeting planned for next week. And we have, and then we expect to be ready to present the new strategic plan at your May meeting.
May meeting, okay.
We did receive a school safety grant, we were one of fourteen schools, Jess is going to put the report on the screen momentarily. We're one of fourteen schools and districts in the state to receive a sixty thousand dollar school safety grant. And this this grant will be utilized by the district to have a consultant come in and work with a team of, of safety leaders. We're going to have a safety team. And they will be working to do a comprehensive review of our entire district, our safety plans. And they will they will make some recommendations that we, if, if something needs to be changed and we will incorporate those into our plans. They may also recommend some safety improvements to our facilities as well. So they're going to look at our facilities, they're going to look at our operations, they're going to look at our safety plans, our procedures. And, and, and help us to, to make sure that our plans are state of the art. Dr. Allen, have a question?
Sorry.
Do we still have the policeman here? I just don't see her here much.
We've, we've had a transition with the officer Gillespie, who was our school resource officer, left the department and took another position elsewhere. So I know that Chief Seaborn is in the process of hiring another, what, sorry?
I, I saw Russell Davidson at the polls.
Yeah.
He's ready to go.
Yeah, we, it's just, it's a process, we do believe that it will be Officer Davidson, Sergeant Davidson. He, he was wonderful, so we, we do believe, I think it will be a, a short period of time before he's actually back on board with us because they have, they have, because they have some vacancies, they have to fill some vacancies. But we are, we are anxiously anticipating the return of our, of our SRO. And we do believe that it will be a five day a week position that the SRO will be with us in the schools when that, when that all happens. So in the meantime, the very police department is incredibly responsive to any needs that we have.
Wait.
So just kind of an aside. It seems like the last five to eight years there's a lot of police that just kind of move on. I mean, is that just Barry, are the other towns experiencing that? Because, I mean, I used to know twenty years ago, you'd know all, all the police in town. And now it's like, I don't think I know any of them.
I think it's challenging, I think being, being a police officer is, is very, very challenging work. And I, and I think that you know, just like every other profession, it's, it's really hard to recruit people to such challenging positions. And so I think it's, I don't, I don't think it's just an issue with Barry. I think it's, it's many, many public servant positions.
I even think for the school, I mean, if, you know, if we have the same officer, you know, like this officer year after year, that's, I think that's great for the kids because
Absolutely.
But if we keep rolling, not we, but if, you know, you get a new officer every half year or whatever, that, I mean, it doesn't defeat the purpose, but it doesn't, certainly doesn't.
Agreed. Agreed. Consistency is key in the school district. Absolutely.
So with this grant, the sixty thousand, someone's coming in to help you, tell you how to spend the money?
Oh, no, no, we
Out of that money.
We're paying for that person out of that money. The money is devoted to paying the consultant and, and stipends for our school safety team. The initial work to do this complete analysis. We will also, this actually, we're, we haven't, we have, the bids are due for the consultant on the eleventh.
Tonight.
Oh, we did, okay. But we will also be supplementing this with, this grant was only written for the middle high school. So this grant only applies to the middle high school. We are going to do a comprehensive review of all the safety plans across the district and all of the elementary schools and, and in central office. So we will be using some rural schools money to supplement this grant so that we have the ability to do the entire district. So we will be using some rural schools money to supplement this grant so that we have the ability to do the entire district. NEAS, um we, our, we have received the final report of the NEAS accreditation committee. Um I have just included commendations and recommendations in our, um, in this school committee report, but there is also a link to the final NEAS report. And it is also on our website. So for your review, um we had many, many commendations. Um the recommendations primarily focus on um continuing to build uh knowledge and awareness of and alignment with the, a vision of the graduate that we've developed. And um continuing to um allow, create more and more opportunities for teacher collaboration around curriculum development. So uh one of the reasons that we put those provisions in the QRTA contract for teachers to work together on curriculum development um has, is related to our NEAS um accreditation report.
And it's also copy in your drive.
Oh, thank you. It's also copy in your drive. Legislative updates. I did want to let you know that I have um recently attended a couple of legislative meetings where legislators and other government officials um were present. I have included a summary of those meetings in my report. Um on last Saturday, I attended um a Mass Municipal Association gathering in Western Mass um with uh many, many Western Mass. Um I, I think there are only two superintendents in the room, but lots of select board members and um, and other, and town administrators. Uh this was, gathering was really focused on rural communities and the needs of rural communities. The Lieutenant Governor spoke. The um, the um new state auditor spoke. We had um our, our, our legislative champions on rural school issues, Joe Comerford, Senator Joe Comerford and, and Representative Natalie Blay presented their um, their presentations on their legislative initiatives. Um I um meant to link, I think we put, I put the presentations that they presented in, just put them in the school committee drive for you. So um we will, we will continue to um watch for that. The, there were, all of the concerns that we talk about here, I've said this many times about how rural communities are affected by um the school funding formula, how rural communities are affected by um the payment in lieu of tax formula, the um challenges that rural communities have in maintaining their municipal facilities. Um the challenges that um rural communities have in uh chapter ninety funding for their roads, for their road projects. You know, we could go on and on and on, but everything that our communities tell us about how challenging it is for them to pay for what they need and pay for what the schools need was echoed by every person in that room. Um we did have uh Dr. Marshall attended um as the chair of the Barry Select Board, Jessica Sizer, the chair, the um Barry Town Administrator was also in attendance, as was Nicole Parker, who was the Hardwick um Hardwick Town Administrator. So there were, uh Quabin was was somewhat well represented. I wish, uh I think, I do believe the other community leaders were invited. Um I wish they had attended, cause it was um, it, it definitely sent the message that our communities are not alone. Uh we are not alone. And that there is some traction in state government. State government is aware of, of the challenges. And they are working towards solutions. There were absolutely no promises other than, but there was definitely awareness. I will say, um Lieutenant Governor Driscoll was um in my mind surprisingly aware of the challenges. She was very well versed in um how difficult these circumstances are for rural communities. And, and she reflected that in, in her remarks. So that was encouraging. Um, you know, but money is what it's going to take. So, um.
Have you ever seen a statistic about how many acres and dollars the state doesn't fund?
For, in, in payment in lieu.
The districts.
Well, yes, and it's actually in some of the presentations. The state auditor's office has done a study of the formula for payment in lieu of taxes and how that formula um negatively disav- disadvantages rural communities. And um there have been some proposals to change that formula um that would help increase the um, the amount that's paid for state owned land in rural communities. So the amount that's paid to rural communities, it's almost as if the land in rural communities is devalued compared to the state owned land in um other communities like Plymouth, Mass, or Edgertown, or some of the more urban areas where there are large tracts. Plymouth has a tremendous number of acres of state owned land. And uh their payment, their amount that they get for payment in lieu of taxes is much greater than a similar tract of land would be in the town of Hardwick, or the town, or any of the towns in Western.
Barry, which has.
Or Barry. That point was made. That point was made at the meeting. We, we provide uh uh a, a val- valuable resource in many ways to towns um and cities east of us. Um so, so that was a very, very interesting meeting. And again, somewhat, somewhat um encouraging. Um, also, there was a legislative meeting held uh by the Mass Association of Regional Schools on Monday. There is, the meeting was recorded. There's a link in the present, in, in the um report that you can watch that entire meeting. There are many senators and representatives there. Again, uh rural issues were front and center in those discussions. And um the minimum aid problem for uh districts with um low and declining enrollment was um, was front and center in those discussions. There are many, many, many school districts that are facing dire financial situations because of the thirty dollar minimum aid and declining enrollment. And many of those districts were represented at that meeting and some of those stories were told. So it, it would be, it's, it was meetings about an hour and a half. It would be an interesting thing for you to watch and I encourage you to do so. Um just moving on, school events. Um, I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize.
Are we going to get a copy of that report? Of your report?
This report? It not in your folder?
Um, I thought I, I thought we put one.
I can't find it in Drive either.
I just put it in, yeah.
I can pass my copy over.
I thought I had one for you, Dr. Allen.
If you could just send me one, that would be good. Cause there's a lot of good stuff in there. I'd like to know.
Absolutely.
Can you just talk a little about what the Director of Rural Affairs?
Oh, I did not finish my sentence.
But now that you did, I'd like to know more about it.
Um, so we, there isn't a lot to know at this point. The, the um part of what, what happened at that, at this meeting was um an opportunity for the participants to have input as to what the Director of Rural Affairs will do. So the position has been um established by the gover- by the governor.
Yeah.
And it is going to, um, you know, they mentioned things like technical assistance to rural communities for, to help with economic development. Um, looking at rural funding issues and making recommendations as to how to address those. So, but there isn't a job description yet, so more to come on that. But again, it's encouraging that the governor has actually established this position. Um it definitely shows that there is, there is attention being paid to the plight of rural communities. And um that's a step in the right direction.
So, are there any, any uh representatives other than uh Lieutenant Governor from Eastern Massachusetts? Or is it all?
Um, the, the Lieutenant Governor and the State Auditor, Diana, just, I don't know. Yeah, and she, um she's from Melrose, I believe. Um she also is uh quite aware and supportive of, you know, I mean, the State Auditor can only do so much. Um but uh she was, she, her, her office is the office that studied the uh challenges, the inequities in the, in the formula for payment of little taxes. And they did it, included in that um information is a, is a quite an extensive presentation around why that is not an equitable formula and recommendations as to how to change it. So, um yes. And. Moving, uh moving on, just, just want you to be aware, you know, this is the spring and there's lots of wonderful things happening in our schools. I would just encourage you to um, to, you know, watch for school newsletters, reach out to principals, um check the district website for, for upcoming events. And please try to participate if you can, because we love to have school committee members at those events. Uh it's great for our students to see you. And it's great for you to see the wonderful things that are happening in all of our schools. Um we are still working on the website. We're still on track to meet that June deadline um for um, for unveiling that, that wonderful new website. And um we have um conducted our final interviews for the Hubbardston Center School Principal. I did call a candidate. Um and so before the end of the week, we should have a new Hubbardston principal or, or early next week. So um we're excited about that, although we are incredibly sad to see Mrs. Peterson um leave our district. But she um, she will be with us through August. So we, we look forward to, to uh her helping us with many, many, many things over the summer. We're not going to let her go one day, one day before the end. So.
I put the ca- uh calendar in everyone's packet and it will, I'll update it in the drive as well as new events come out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's helpful.
So moving on to teaching, learning and support.
Um, we, I think we have some redundancies between Sheila's.
Oh, I'm.
Our departments, no, not your fault. So I'll go quickly, but um super busy time of the year. We always sort of acknowledge our teachers and the work they're doing and our students. And I thought this month it might be kind of fun to highlight our administrators, our building administrators. So MCAS is well underway. So uh we started MCAS in our elementary schools and our middle high school. Um a lot of field trips are happening. You guys are aware of the DC trip. And also this is the time of year where elementary students head off to nature's classroom um at the end of May. And they're starting to plan their end of year um field trips. We have a lot of informational nights coming up. We're offering summer programming. We do uh kindergarten information night. We do a transition to sixth grade information night. All of those things are happening. Um we recently administered student and staff feedback surveys. So uh these are surveys that we assign to our students and they can report on um, they're, they're sort of um rostered to one teacher. So we look at the B block and we say whoever the student has for the B block teacher, we want them to give that teacher feedback. Uh and they're asked questions about um, you know, the classroom. Warm inviting place. Do you make connections with your teachers? Uh do your teachers set high expectations for learning? Um how do the other students in your class behave and act to their value? Learning, different things like that. So our teachers um have gotten those surveys. And then also we do staff feedback surveys for our building administrators, administrators. So all of the teachers are assigned to the building administrator and they um report out on the conditions of the school. So, um, you know, uh again, same kinds of questions, but is the climate of the school a positive climate? A place where you want to come to work? Your colleagues support you? Um are there areas of academic focus? Um do you have support when you need it? If uh different things are happening. So we're underway with those feedback surveys. We also have um all of the things that happen this time of year that our administrators need to think about, budgets and schedules for next year. Um and all of their typical day to day work as well. Sheila talked about the um interviews for the Hubbardston Center School. I will echo, uh we will miss Principal Peterson for sure next year. Um and we are going to fully utilize her um through the summer. And also this is a time when we start really thinking about what's our progress to date. So have we reached some of our academic goals? Are we making progress on some of the things um that we set out to do? And then really thinking about how to plan forward for that. Um, and some of the areas that we've kind of reviewed our progress on are we um initiated some different things that we're working on. One was uh better support to our students. So we devised the SSST progress uh process. We talked about that earlier in the sub, the student support um team pro- process. We also um currently our principals and our teachers are undergoing all kinds of academic progress meetings and data review. We have all the intervention models um done at the elementary level as well as our sixth grade. We are reviewing and thinking about the adjustments. We're doing that with our teacher. Really taking feedback from our teachers on what the impact on students is so we can make uh decisions about going into next year. And we've had a focus on attendance this past year. We recently got an effective practice grant. We could write for five different areas. But what we focused on was the idea of inclusion and co-teaching. So we see um gaps with disabilities. And we felt this was a way that we could try and address some of those academic gaps. It's three hundred thousand dollars over the course of three years, but they just gave it to us now. Um so we have to spend fifty two thousand of it before the end of the year. And then they'll sort of divvy out the rest of it over the next two years. Um we just posted for an intervention to, to support our middle school to help us with that inclusion piece. And we plan to offer professional development in the area of inclusion and co-teaching. And we did get a continuation grant. We had previously had an SEL mental health grant. And they offered us a little bit more money. Um, I think because we're using it wisely and we're seeing good things happening. But we're going to focus on the interventions uh for our students. And I'm going to just sort of pass it to Joe to talk about Innovation Pathway and um.
Before you do.
Yeah.
You mentioned programs for the summer. Tell us what they are.
Sure. So if you remember last year, we were able to offer a five week program completely free to families. We did an early literacy STEM camp over at Ruggles Lane. It was offered every day for five weeks from eight thirty to two thirty roughly in the afternoon. Free to families. All they had to do was provide transportation for their students, a snack and lunch. Um and we also offered a STEM camp at the middle school. It ran about eight fifteen to two fifteen. Our teachers taught in it. We had a lot of student interns that came and supported our students. Um, and when we had gotten the first grant, it also offered this idea of a continuation grant. So we're guaranteed the money for this summer as well as next summer.
For those students.
Yeah.
Great.
How many kids can each program take?
Well, it's uh funny that you ask, because we just put a survey out and we already have over a hundred students interested. So we really have to, the, the positive thing is that last year we didn't have as much interest. So we purchased a lot of resources that we can use this summer. So we won't have to spend money on the resources or curriculum for it. So we'll be able to allot more money to staffing to hopefully be able to have every student attend it. They'll watch it. That's our goal.
Right, that's great.
Um I wanted to ask about your uh. I had the opportunity to co-teach in a true co-teaching model for a couple of years. And it is something that I believe in and value, especially for those high need students. Um do you have an existing program? Or is this it here that you hope to get it started?
Yeah, we do not have an existing program. There has been some work done in the district on co-teaching models. Um, but we do not. And it would be the start of what we're hoping to achieve down the road.
I had a very positive experience. And if you, if you can do it, if you have the staffing. I mean, it's just, it's great for all kids, even, you know, not just the high needs kids, but those regular kids.
Right, I agree with you.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
I think teachers are also, they feel more fulfilled.
Oh, I, I loved it. Highlight, highlight of my career, those two years co-teaching. Loved it.
Maybe you can help us get it off the ground.
I'd love to.
So I can talk about the Innovation Pathway program. Um, I did want to say we uh received notification from uh Department of Education or Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that we have been approved for the new business. Have been approved for the new business pathway program so that we're adding that as additional pathway. We are working with, uh, uh, North Central Mass Hire. To, uh, be able to provide up to twenty summer, uh, internships for students that are interested in working in STEM fields. Um, we're going to be, spend, uh, some time this spring finding students that might be interested in participating and, uh, securing, uh. Spots for them with businesses in the area. And then I also wanted to mention, uh. We have three students going to the International DECA competition that will be held in, um. Orlando. Uh, I think it starts on the twenty-sixth of April. And we have one student that will be competing and we have two students that are in, in early leadership. Program, uh, that's a, that's a part of that conference. They'll be there for, for three or four days and that, that'll be a great experience for them.
If it's okay, the DECA International Competition, um, I got a, I got a, a, a call from Dr. Muir and from Jessica. That, uh, they needed approval, pre-approval before the thirteenth. We had the meeting on the sixth, meeting today. And it's an item. And so under new business, um, we have a request for approval for the DECA. Distributive Education Club of America trip to Orlando for International Career Development Conference, April twenty-first to twenty-sixth. They, they needed approval ahead of time, so we, we are set up to give that pre-approval. We need to give the full approval. And I also asked, uh, through the superintendent and Jess, that when they come back, we'd like to have a report. And hear how the students did and how it went and have the students probably at the May meeting I mentioned, but. I leave that up to the superintendent and Jess to take care of that. So Joe, if it's okay with you, perfect position on your report. I'm going to ask the school committee, uh, is there a motion to request approval? Is there a second? Okay. Roll call.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Mr. Will Lannan?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggler?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Jean Preswah has left the meeting and Chairman Brophy.
Yes. Uh, Joe, real one quick question. Uh, congratulations on, on your team and everyone involved. The business pathway has fallen, been approved. Um, what are the, um, business? Overview, what, how, what does it hit into? Marketing, design? I'm curious. What issues of business does it have from accounting? Can you give us a quick overview?
Sure, there's, um, hospitality and tourism, um, marketing, accounting. Um, and business systems, I would say are the areas that we, that we cover the, the most. Those are sort of the highlights.
It's gonna be very.
Fantastic. Can we also, I mean, are we able to like tap into state organizations and things like that? For internships?
Uh, sure.
I'm just curious, anything out in the north central area here in Central Mass? This is fantastic. This is what, the fourth? Third or fourth?
Third.
Third. Thirty.
Yep, we have advanced manufacturing, information technology and now business.
Fantastic.
Yeah, that's great news.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I'm next. Good evening, everyone. Kristin Campione, Student Services Director. Um, I'll just start with our tiered focused monitoring audit, um, that we've been working on for two years. We had a draft, uh, report released yesterday. I'm pleased to report that we had no areas of. Non-compliance in special education and we had two areas in civil rights. One was our, um. Discipline regarding, um, students with disabilities as well as our, um. The other one was on our bullying intervention plan and policy and we have since, uh, with your help. Have cleaned up the bullying, uh, plan and procedure as well as the policy. So that one is actually all resolved. And we just have some work to do with some language in our student handbooks at the elementary and middle high school. So I'm thrilled to report that tonight. I'm glad the hard work part is over. Thank you to everyone who toured. Uh, DESC around their buildings as well as thank you to all the office staff, the team chairs. Uh, especially Jess, of course, um, Nancy Landry and of course Laura Holbrook. Who was my coordinator, who I graciously shared with Colleen and Joe, uh, at the beginning of this year. Uh, next I'll just talk about, we have a CPAC meeting, um, on April tenth at six o'clock. And this is, uh, a focus for students with disabilities who are currently in fifth grade, going to grade six. And we'll have school adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, gen ed teachers and team chairs will be in attendance to answer some questions as. A panel that will be a virtual meeting at six o'clock on April tenth. I did include the link in your report. Please feel free to join us if you would like to. And then lastly, lastly, just an abbreviated schedule for Unified Sports Basketball. Our second season is starting. Uh, with Coach Zalneritis and we have, um. Two home games that I was able to see on the schedule so far with the Shova and North Middlesex and then we're away at Lunenburg. So there are more games to be scheduled, but that was all that was available at the time of this report. So thank you very much for your time and, um. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Walsh, would you like to, uh. Give us your report?
Sure. Uh, so the punch list, uh, the, um, change order went up to the vendor after Kevin and I went over it to make sure everything was in place. They processed the order, waiting now on the vendor to actually receive the cameras. Um, if the last order was any indication, that's anywhere from two to three months for the shipping. Uh, just because the supply chain on camera stuff is still so far behind. Uh, the programmers and installers are coming back next week to finish out the original punch list, we hope. Um, and then. Uh, that part of the, the original part of the project should be wrapped up. The webpage is almost done with the development phase and it's now with the content migration team, which is where they're going to start migrating, creating webpages based on the templates we designed. And migrating some of the content that we want over. Most of the content, we're going to be transferring ourselves. Um, we're hoping to get access to that site by the end of April, beginning of May, so we can start populating those pages to make that June deadline. Uh, the cybersecurity grant from the state, the first batch of training started, uh, earlier this week with its ta- uh, the staff took a self-assessment. And they begin their self-guided training and then a post-assessment, uh, in the next few weeks. Um, as Colin said, MCAS has started and the tech department plays a large part in that because it's all computer-based. So we spend our mornings now at all the schools. Um, supporting the teachers and the students that are taking that. The tech department closed two hundred and twenty-four tickets this le- since last school committing, committee meeting for a total of twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty-three since the start of the school year. We have posted a job for a technology position to replace an employee who's no longer with us. So. We are currently now short-staffed and covering those schools, one man down. And that's all I have.
Questions?
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
So last month we were, had noti- been notified by actually a town administrator in Hardwick of an opportunity to apply for a congressional directed spending request. Federal grant through, uh, Senator Warren and, uh, Markey's offices. And it was due the next day. I actually got it done. I wrote my first ever grant and then it was delayed because of the snow day. So they did recognize it and I said, here. So we got it in and we're using the Chiller Project, um, for this, if we get this grant. Unfortunately, at the time that we received all the information, they had no timeline released as to when we would know. So I'm not sure how that's going to play into our plans, but we'll let you know. Um, we are working on updating the cost of that Chiller replacement project. With the vendor and engineer and a rigor. And if we can't get his pricing down that we are bidding through, uh, Summer Swell, a co- cooperative purchasing agreement. Then we may decide to go out and bid, um, the three different components of the project. We also are looking at getting the press box and bleacher system, you, as you know. Um, at this point, we have just over sixteen thousand dollars. I think it's sixteen thousand three, six, uh, sixteen thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Six hundred dollars was received today, but we don't put it in the balance and the check, check's clear. Um, so we're, we're far from where we believe that project will. What, what will it cost us? We need to go out and get updated prices because that was actually priced out for us before COVID. So we're trying to get those together quickly. I just sent emails to all the town administrators asking them what the deadlines are for warrant articles. And what is our process for getting that done? I'll work with our bank to get the language we need to have for this filing, but until we get across, we have no idea what we're, what we're looking for. Um, Mr. Kevin Clark provided for you a list of what the projects have been going on in our buildings and I don't want to go through those and take time. But you can look through everything that's been happening in our building on the. Things. Mr. Boar Ghul provided us with the average monthly participation for school lunch. Um, she redesigned the report. It's a little easier to read, but if you have any questions, there is a blue block in there for Hubbardson and that's because they had one less school day so far. That they are making up in June. That was just to notify that. Um, and I did provide for you as you requested the grant reports. There's no new grant to report, although Ms. Muhar did get a grant that just hasn't been able to get all the paperwork. So we don't put on the list until we receive all the paperwork. That's all I have for tonight. I'm sorry, the warrants. Uh, the warrants released since the last school committee meeting, payroll by weekly number nineteen and twenty. Weekly number thirty-seven, thirty-eight and thirty-nine accounts payable. I need to make a correction to last month's report. I have been carrying a prescription for glasses in my pocket for, for a year and it was not, um, fifty-eight FQ. It was fifty, uh, it was, oh my God, I got it wrong here. Fifty-eight F-O for Ocam. Um, and I, I know that there was a problem because I'm like, why is there a Quaben one number fifty-nine? So. Warrants released for March were fifty-nine FQ, sixty-B, sixty-one A, sixty-two B. Sixty-three H and sixty-five. Fix this, just. Okay, that's, I don't have anything to.
Okay. Anything from athletics or?
So there is, um, there is a report from Mr. Myville, um. In, in the, um, as contained in this report, he's got over three hundred student athletes. Um, and, um, our teams are up and running. And he has included, um, names of the coaches. As well as, um. I think we, I just signed the, uh, the, um. Employment letter for our, uh, middle school, I believe baseball coach. That was the last coach we hired. So it's been a little bit of a challenging, uh, coaching hiring season in some, in some, for some teams. But he does have a link to all of the schedules for the athletic contests. In, um, in your report as well as a list of all of the, um, of our coaches. So we have, uh. We have a robust spring schedule.
Just going to say thank you. I think it's nice that the coach is listed. It really is. It's nice to see.
Yes.
I think it's, um. Really nice that we had a good picture and article regarding the unified team and the battery is that last time. I think that's the most wonderful thing.
Agreed.
So glad we're involved in that. I, I just think, I, I wish, you know, people had thought of this twenty, twenty-five years ago. But I, I'm really so pleased that we're involved in that.
It's, it's an incredible opportunity for all of our students and we are, we are really thankful that we are able to do that for, for our school. And, um, Mr. Divine is next.
So I just have a few things to talk about. Um, I just want to make you aware that the early college process that I, that was discussed earlier in the year is continuing. We have an, uh, a commitment from Worcester State University to partner with us. That process and at this point, last year, the application had been released from the state and I'm still waiting for that application to happen. That it's, it's still kind of in limo, um, and, but Worcester State University has made that commitment done. Now, in the meantime. Uh, Worcester State University reached out to me, uh, Ryan Forsyth, who's the vice president in terms, in terms of their enrollment programming. Reached out to me and said that they have a funded dual enrollment program for students in Central Mass High Schools. Uh, I'm having a meeting tomorrow with their early college coordinator at Worcester State at two o'clock. Get more information about that in hopes that, you know, he said that it would be this summer or in the fall where our students will be able to access. Dual enrollment courses at no cost.
Beautiful.
So I will find out more about that tomorrow. In terms of work-based learning, which is our internship program, we presently have twenty-six students in our work-based program. Uh, one of those students is being paid by the state through a high school senior internship education project. This is a project that they made us aware of in July and they did not fund it until March twenty-seventh. So that, that created a number of challenges over the course of the year, um, in terms of communication and other things. But we do have one student doing that. She's working twenty hours a week with the sixth graders and she'll get paid for up to a hundred hours. And I've included information on that program, um, in a, in a, um, a link there. The state and Joe, Joe talked about this a little bit. It's also funding a STEM internship opportunity for students through the summer. Um, this is for students from sixteen to eighteen years old. We have, we've qualified for up to ten students to span that program. Depending on what other school districts do, we may be able to get more seats for that. Um, and it's also for up to a hundred and twenty-five hours. Again. I've gotten different information on that. We don't have the nuts and bolts about that. I see one document that says one twenty-five hours and another document says a hundred hours. So we're not really sure where that stands right now and more information is forth, forthcoming on that. Um, and I put a link there for that so that you can see a little bit more information about that. In terms of the post-grad support that, that we've been doing, they continue to develop work-based learning sites for students. And at this point, they're proposing, the kids are proposing to sponsor a town-wide yard sale in New Braintree. Um, they're on the agenda for the New Braintree Select Board meeting on April tenth, twenty-twenty-three. And right now I have a young lady that hopefully is going to be able to present with me to the Select Board in New Braintree on Monday night. Um, and more information about that will be forthcoming. We're modeling it on some of the townwide yard sales they have in the other towns because they don't have that at New Braintree. We thought that was a good opportunity for our kids to collect some materials, prepare them for sale, do an inventory and start to get. The idea of, of kind of doing a business as well as doing some community outreach of the town in Braintree. Um, the other thing our post-grads did is last Thursday, uh, our post-grads had the opportunity to take a tour of Hardwick Kilns. J R offered to have our kids come over and look at what happens there. And I've never been there before and it was completely fascinating. Uh, if anybody has the chance to go down and see what happens at Hardwick Kilns, the amount of lumber that sits in that yard is absolutely mind-boggling. It's literally, literally millions of board feet of lumber that goes through that place and it takes about seven months for them to process it and it goes. It comes from all over the United States and goes all over the world, right from Hardwick. And it's, it's amazing what, what happens there. So special thanks to J R. Um, he was wonderful with our kids. He was patient with those kids. He really took the time. We were there for about an hour and a half. He really took the time to. To let them see what happens there. Even one of the kilns that aren't quite so hot. He let the kids go into the kiln and see how warm it was. There's a kiln where they, it's about a hundred and forty degrees and one of the, we had, one of the kids wanted to stay there. And the last thing I want to mention is we had a wonderful program, um, this past month, the Credit for Life Program. It's a program that existed. This is the tenth year that we participated in it, but it's, there's been a hiatus for the past three or four years with Country Bank. Uh, we were successful in getting a grant for twenty-five hundred dollars to be able to buy, give supplies to the kids. Support some of the, the people that are working at, at the fair, but it's a literacy fair to show kids how, you know, they give kids a budget. And a career and a credit, a credit rating and they tell kids that they have this much money to work with, see how much you can come up with by the end of the month. And they go to different stations around the gym. Um, it really is a wonderful program. I really want to thank Jody Girallitis and Country Bank for, for their sponsorship of that. We also hadn't, it was kind of nice. We had students from Western High School and Eagle Hill School that were also here for that program. And so I always think it's nice to have other schools come because they're always so impressed with what we have. And so it's nice to hear that from other places. Um, I also want to thank Mr. Nutter, Mr. Deschamps, as well as the staff from, from Central Office. That volunteered to be at the, um, Credit for Life Program. Um, and it was really, you know, I. I'd love to get, kind of get their impression. It's really a wonderful program and the kids walk away from there with really valuable, practical knowledge. And there is a link to Country Bank's Facebook page about that, um, in the report. So thank you.
Greg, would you, would you just want to share a little sneak peek of what we saw yesterday and what the facilities were?
We have, the superintendent and I yesterday went to, um, a Roots program, which is in Garter, turned by Gamma. Um, the Roots program is a innovative way for providing outpatient therapeutic services to adolescents from age twelve to twenty-four. In a non-traditional setting. It's, they're, they have a nine-year, it seems like it's a nine-year. In a non-traditional setting, it's, they have a nine-year, it seems like it's a nine-year research program, more or less, to determine whether or not. Um, this type of therapy is effective. And the type of therapy that it is, is going, basically going to hang out and work on a farm. Um, and they, so they would spend time, they would meet with a therapist and an individual student might go out with a therapist and go out to the barnyard and, and look at the horses and this, and look at the relationships that exist between the five horses and the paddock and how they get along or don't get along and have, you know. And get the kids to reflect on some of the things that are going on there. Um, one of the most impressive statistics that they shared with us yesterday was that uh, most, the average number that of, of therapy sessions that an adolescent attends is two. Their, their average number of sessions that an adolescent attends is twenty-two. So they're very effective engaging and engaging kids and getting them to, to kind of be involved. Um, they are in the process of working out with us an opportunity for two or three, where they have three therapists for up to three of our kids. To be able to go there at some point, um, to receive that, where I'm meeting with, um, the middle school care team. Um, the guidance counselors, school adjustment counselors, administrators this coming week to hopefully identify two or three kids that really could use that. And at the other end, the Roots program at Gamma is going to work on providing transportation. So that they can get our kids there. Um, it's, it's fully funded by the Department of Public Health. It will not cost the district or our kids a penny to access this.
Thank you.
And we're hoping to kind of develop more of a relationship with that. The other thing that we're looking at too is the program that they have with telehealth. And telecounseling through Haywood Hospital. It's been successful in the Gardner Public Schools and some of the other public schools, systems in the northern part of Worcester County. Um, and, and Howley Fores, who is, um, one of our school adjustment counselors and works with the, you know, you know. Uh, what's the, what's the program, Kristen, that we call that? Not the A L P.
Therapeutic.
Therapeutic, thank you. A therapeutic classroom. Um, she brought that to our attention again. And so we're, we're kind of exploring that. So we, we, we recognize the value of providing support for our students in these kinds of ways. And we also recognize the need because we have such, it, this is kind of like a desert for adolescent care. In terms of the area where we live, our kids either need to go, you know, as I said, just that they have to go to Palmer, they have to go to Worcester, they have to go to Springfield. There's very little here. Um, this program in Gardner, yeah, it's a half an hour away, but they're going to send a van to get those kids. And that's, that's going to be really appreciated. And they were very confident to be able to provide us with transportation. And I really do appreciate that Dr. Mira was able to kind of join me to go visit that place. I think it was freezing cold.
It would.
But it was, um, it, it was really quite an impressive feeling to go and wander for.
You said Roots?
Roots.
Roots by Gamma?
Yeah. Yeah. It's, um, it's a, what is it? Evergreen?
Uh, evergreen?
It's, yeah, it's at their Evergreen facility.
Yes.
They have a hundred and fifteen acres right on one forty.
Okay.
Um, right by where the old, um, like Gardner Hospital was, the, the front side of it. Um, and they are just, they're being very great.
Beautiful. So it's a working farm?
It's a working, well, yeah, it's a working farm. It's, it's actually, you know what? It's not really a working farm. What it is, it's, it's, it's a farm animal rescue.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what it is. So like if, if they, if you're, if you have a pot-bellied pig that you can't take care of anymore and you call them, they will probably come and get it. Um, they have pot-bellied pigs. They have pygmy goats. They have big goats. They have Newfoundland ponies. The guy was telling us there's only five hundred Newfoundland ponies in the whole world left and they have five of them. Um, they have donkeys. They have horses. They have geese. They have tur, they have all kinds of stuff. Um, and they were fascinating and their, their whole, their whole take on it really was to guide the students through reflection on the behaviors of the animals and how that reflects their own behaviors. Just a fascinating.
Fascinating.
Kind of system and way of doing things. And.
By personal experience, I think cows are the best.
They didn't have any cows.
Not have any cows, no.
They're the best things.
They didn't have any cows. Um, but it's, and it's, and it's a, it's also a program that's funded in different parts of, of the state. There's, there's an, there's an equine program in Framingham. There's a, a wilderness adventure program that, that what? Is doing and it's all, um, being funded through the Department of Public Health. But we made this connect, actually the superintendent made the connection through Gamma and this Roots program, I think. And we're made aware of it because of CAPS collaborative. Is that right?
Well, there are, uh, other districts in the area accessing it. So CAPS collaborative is one. Uh, the Ashburnham, Westminster, Gardner, um, school district. I, I think our challenge, as Greg said, is transportation. Um, it's, you know, if you live in Gardner or you, you, or you go to school in Gardner. Um, it's easy for, to get on a city, some sort of, or, you know, public transit and get to this. Most of the students access the program after school hours. They go for a one hour a week. And most of the students access the program after school hours. Um, but they are at capacity, um, for their after-school slots. So we are exploring the benefit for some of our students who have great needs to maybe take in a couple of hours out of their school day and access the program. It's a very, very limited access right now because again, we're close to the end of the school year and we do not have transportation. They have limited funding for transportation. We are hopefully exploring some additional transportation options for the future. Because this is a program that they could provide us a greater number of slots if we could work out some transportation. So we hope that it will expand in the future. Um, but we're also, as, as Greg said, with the help of many other people in the district, exploring as many options as we can to provide um, mental health and substance use, substance, um, uh, use disorder. Treatment and, and, um, recovery for our students as, as we can. And the resources are very scarce. So we're, we're working hard to find whatever we can.
Thank you. Fantastic. Thank you. Thorough report once again, and nice to know what's happening in L E S, in all the areas as well. Uh, teacher advisory council?
Mr. Behringer is not here tonight.
Subcommittee reports, administrative review. Audit, nothing?
Oh, nothing. I keep forgetting that. That's me.
It's all right. It's been a quiet, quiet year this.
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, budget?
Yes. Um, we have not had a budget meeting since our, uh, public hearing. And the school, public hearing and school committee meeting, uh, the last month, the budget still stands at, uh, seven point nine percent increase. And as, as we've been made aware, I've been made aware, it's, it's still a significant reach, represents a significant reach for our towns in terms of assessment. Uh, we expect house numbers to come out, um, looks like August twelfth. And you all received an email today asking you about your availability for a couple of different, uh, possible sessions. At first we were going to do a budget committee meeting and then a school committee meeting, but the bottom line is it appears we're going to need a vote very shortly after the budget. So a combined meeting, uh, either the thirteenth, if the numbers come out on the twelfth. Or the eighteenth, if the numbers don't come out. And I, it's going to be a tight turnaround there, figuring out.
You said August, Mark?
April.
You mean April.
April. Did I say August?
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully we're not talking about this. I mean, there's no guarantee, but, uh, you know, for, for April, we've got the thirteenth and the eighteenth. That, um, are, are tentative meetings per se. And hopefully the numbers do come out on the twelfth. The, um, second portion of, of, uh, of the budget report is you do have in front of you fiscal year twenty-three, the current year we're in. This is the time of year where we're making adjustments at the end of the year to, uh, to our appropriations control. And, uh, we've got a number of different items which are listed at the bottom. And can these all go as one motion or, uh, you want four different motions?
I don't think we have any conflicts anymore, right? So it goes one.
Okay, I'm, I want to make a motion that, that covers these transfers. To hopefully, uh, you know, put our budget in sync. One, I move to A, transfer six hundred and fifty-eight dollars from twenty-one, ten dash thirty-two hundred instructional support. And three hundred and ninety-one dollars from thirty-five, ten dash thirty-five, twenty athletics and student activities. Two, forty-one, ten dash forty-three hundred buildings and grounds to cover the cost of furniture not budgeted for. B, transfer two hundred and six dollars from eleven hundred dash fourteen thirty-five district administration and legal to fifty-two sixty fixed charges to cover the actual costs of business insurance policy renewals. C, transfer two hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and seven dollars from nine thousand special education tuition to fourteen fifty special education administrative technology and support and thirty-three hundred special education transportation. And D, transfer forty-eight hundred dollars from twenty-one, ten dash thirty-two hundred instructional support. Fifty thousand from thirty-three hundred transportation. Five hundred from thirty-four hundred school nutrition services. And thirty-seven thousand from thirty-six hundred school security to nine thousand tuition for school choice and charter school assessments.
Second.
Any further questions, comments? Bring none? Roll call.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Mr. Will Lannan?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Cartier?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yeah.
Ms. Corneille?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wiegler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I agree, Mark. Um, that email went out. So when we get the turnaround date, we'll have a committee of the whole, a full meeting.
You might know before the twelfth that it's not being released on the twelfth. You'll never know?
No, actually it's being released a, a week before it generally is.
All right.
Um, I spoke with Julie Keller. She seems to have her pulse on this and she says it will be released on the twelfth. But generally D E S C needs to take with the legislature votes and then put it down into the district numbers. So I, I'm thinking it's not going to come out till the thirteenth, but we're, we're going to try to get it to work.
Okay.
And what, what's the purpose of this? Is this to see if we have more money so we can lower the assessment?
Right. Well, we've, we've been working, the administrative team has been working to make some cuts in the budget proposal that went before you for the public hearing. We've got some proposals of maybe using some, making some changes to the projected revenue sources and to see if we get more out of the house budget. Um, and we also need to send assessment letters to the towns by April twenty-eighth. Um, so we need to, if we're going to make changes, we need to take a vote to make those changes and send us an assessment.
Those people are very optimistic about house numbers. Actually, Sheila was. So, so hopefully we'll get some additional resources.
Somewhat optimistic.
We can hopefully make some.
And the administration.
Two downward change.
And they've been looking to, they've been looking to make some adjustments and things like that. Um, central office, nothing. Collector bargaining?
Uh, preliminary meetings, uh, preliminary meeting would be setting the ground rules and scheduling two future meetings. With the secretaries, custodians, the office, association and the nutrition staff. And we had our first negotiation meeting with the paraprofessionals. And it's all ongoing through, we're scheduled out through May and.
What, did you mention the custodians still?
I did.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah.
You got them all. Good. The five groups. Uh, buildings and grounds?
Uh, nothing.
Policy review and reform?
October.
Okay. Student services report?
Well, Kristen spoke, uh, but we also had, um, her team chairs, persons there tonight. Which probably took a bus meeting, but it was just nice to hear them speak about what over seven hundred students that they're servicing. Which is very difficult, I think, because, you know, they travel school to school to school. They try to handle everybody. Um, they've talked about the net program and how we were transitioning, transitioning to our own and how that's working. I think staffing's a little bit of an issue at times, but I kind of feel for those chair people. You know, that's a lot of work.
Good.
And how it all falls to, into play with parents and kids and teachers and administrators. It's a task.
Thank you. Uh, technology?
Mr. Walsh took care of the, the report.
Okay. Uh, ad hoc school district configuration?
Even if I wanted to buy a day to have a meeting. Now to June, mid-June already. No, no, no.
Okay. And then the superintendent's search.
We have been busy. We held our first meeting, the orientation with the screening committee. And Liz LeFond from M A S C. So we have a sixteen-member screening committee. Um, which is a big number. It's manageable. We have a great group. Um, I think, you know, just put together a great, did a great job with the lottery and choosing. And we have, we have a lot of people with all the right backgrounds. I think that will have some, well, it'll be very productive and, um, we're really looking forward to getting started. So the application's closed tomorrow is the deadline. And we are meeting on Tuesday. Our meetings from this point will have to go into executive session. Um, and that's, that was a lot of the things we went over at the orientation was open meeting laws and the confidentiality. Because all of the applicants at this point will be confidential. Um, and we will review all, we'll get the applications over the weekend and review them over the weekend. And then as a group on the eleventh will be our meeting to decide who moves forward. The week of April twenty-fourth is when we will hold the interviews with those individuals that we choose to move forward to interview stage. Um, those again will still be in executive session. So we're not sure. We've kind of blocked that whole week and even a potential of Saturday. If necessary, depending on how many applicants we decide to interview. And then moving, we also, um, have the survey out and they've been getting a lot of responses on that. So I know the schools have been great and the towns have been great putting that out. So make sure anyone listening or that you fill out the survey. So we have everyone's perspectives captured. And then we plan to bring to the full school committee, the finalists. And plan to conduct those interviews the week of May twenty-second with all of us present. And at that time, the names will become public and those will be held in the open session. So we're really excited and looking forward to the deadline closing tomorrow and rolling our sleeves up and choosing our next superintendent.
But you could change your mind.
I know. That's still on the table. You have another date of.
So again, thank you for all the work, both of you. Um, you have a committee of what, sixteen?
The screening committee is sixteen, I think is where we landed.
And then we'll, whatever you determine to recommend to the full committee, um, will be the finalists. And I think you said between three to five, it could be depending on what you see through this process.
We decided at the subcommittee level not to put any number on any of the interviews. How many candidates we would move forward for semifinalist interviews or finalists. But we anticipate probably a manageable number around three to five.
And we'll probably need more than one night for the finalist interview.
Yes, we're going to block that week.
Maybe three.
And also in the meantime, in between those finalists and semifinal, the semifinalists and finalists interviews, there will be visits both to our district and theirs and a lot of those things going on as well in that interim period of time.
And just so the committee members know that, that's, again, that's the work and thank you of the, the subcommittee screening for doing all that. So then when we get the finalists, and then it will be our job and we'll take from that and go from there. Or obviously, we would work with the, the screen committee of how we do that. And then we'll decide as a committee when we'll deal with the next step of how many questions we'll do and everything else. So. Um, I, I came and listened. I was an observer that last week. I wanted to stay here on the confidentiality piece. Now we're, now it's closed. Going forward, it's closed as it goes forward. Because there is a confidentiality piece in this, but I just want to echo the work that you have sixteen people to be able to kick A. And they are duly sworn in. That was a good point you should make, is that the confidentiality is very, very important. From this stage.
Yeah.
No, we did not have to.
Oh, you don't, but it was like given?
It was like given.
It was given?
Yes. We didn't have to be officially sworn in by.
We signed papers.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Confidentiality papers.
Confidentiality papers. And they would disclosure papers if need be. Right. By anyone who might be related to someone who works at this, you know, in the district or whatever.
So I just want to echo, thank you for the full committee to be able to do and for the folks that have stepped up to say, to do that. And um, look forward to.
It's a big ask. It's a big ask to attend a lot of meetings and it's important work and to have these people come forward and want to be part of the processes. It's helpful to us, but it's, you know, it's just in true Quabin fashion. Everybody just wants to roll up their sleeves and help out. We couldn't do it without them.
Uh, no unfinished business. Uh, any public comment?
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
I'd like to congratulate Mr. Marsh and being re-elected to the school committee.
That's good.
His son came in.
Yeah, he had, uh, very good. Congratulations, Mr. Marsh.
Thank you.
Uh, no public comment?
No.
Any school committee concerns? Dr. Allen?
Yeah, three things. First off, Capstone. I was reading a story in the Worcester Telegram about three or four weeks ago about one of our kids in the Capstone project. And he, what's that stuff? Is it Narcan or something like that? That he was collecting or bringing together so that somebody who'd had a drug overdose could be rehabilitated or re-re-something or rather, brought back from death or. That's that's the term. And I thought, you know, that's nice. We have this project and it gets a write-up in the Worcester paper from someone, one of our kids. That's that's good. Two, this deck of business club, they asked me to come in and talk to them. I spent a couple hours with them a few weeks ago. And it was great because as you know, they went down to Worcester. And I think they had five of them that went to the state finals. And one of them then went to the, not the national, international. That went, now I know this was already reported, but it was kind of exciting. And two others, one is Teresa Salvador's boy. Who I think is said is president of the sophomore class, but they're going down to a workshop down there and we're looking to raise money. But this is a new program. It sounds really terrific. The kids are enthusiastic. The one that won, he wants to go to California. He's looking for, what was that school Hank gathers died at? Basketball player?
Oh, um.
Marymount?
I want to say Marymount, but I'm not sure if that's it.
Anyway.
Marymount, New York, Long Island.
He wants to go to that school. But anyway.
I I think it starts with them, but I I.
Well, it was great talking to them. And I think it's tomorrow morning is the change of command at Rotsey. And Summer Barringer is rotating out. Evan's Evan's daughter, who has been here and so forth and had lunch with, or dinner with her at that spaghetti dinner, the Rotsey spaghetti dinner. John came over. Some of you know, John was a school committee member off and on for a number of years too. So that was, that was kind of nice. That's right.
Good. Yes, sir.
I get credit for like, a couple of observations. I counted six Quabin alumni that were employees of the Country Bank, number one. One of the employ, one of our former graduates, I worked with her in the booth that I was in. And she talked about the fact that when she graduated from Quabin, she really didn't know what she wanted to do. She went to work for Country Bank. Country Bank pays for her, her education. She had an associate's degree. She's got a professional job. And she's, her children are, she's got young children anyways. But anyway, it was, I thought it was really interesting that the kids that we had in school are now working in the community and they're accessing uh, resources right, right in their area of employment and Country Bank is is doing that for them. So I think it's a really good, it's a credit to the Country Bank.
Yes.
I just want to say thank you to all the staff, teachers, administrators that work hard each and every day for our students. And with MCAS upon us, I wish everybody luck. They enjoy their April vacation.
All right, and we have just two more items left on the new business. We have an appointment of the treasurer. Um, the previous treasurer.
As I reported to you in the fall, Mr. Ron Christiansen, who has been our treasurer since I've been here for the last twenty-two years, is retiring from Livingston and Hanes, which is the certified public accountant firm that he works for. And uh, both he and Ms. Kathleen Borseyer, who is our assistant treasurer, have written letters to the school committee that I'll get to you um, to request. I think I'll read her letter to you if I may. Uh, dear school committee, as you know, Ronald Christiansen will be retiring from Livingston and Hanes P C, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The two of us that have been working together as treasurer and assistant treasurer for the school district for many years. I would appreciate your consideration of me taking over the role as treasurer and Ron as assistant treasurer. Ron will be assisting me in the areas that I did not get involved in as assistant treasurer. I'm confident that this will be a smooth transition. I would appreciate your vote on this change of positions. Very truly yours, Kathleen Borseye.
Borseye.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved. Second for the discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Daychamps?
Yes.
Mr. Will Lannan?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain? Ms. Chamberlain? Ms. Cormier?
Yes, getting late.
Mr. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wiegler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you for that vote. I just want to say that my whole staff is so thankful that Mrs. Borseye will take this over because we did not want to go through a change of treasurer. We were very happy when they contacted us in the fall and said, hey, we just want to flip on. Thank God. Thank you for that vote. I'll inform them tomorrow.
And then uh, the other one is the school choice twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. I'm gonna turn over the superintendent and we'll go from there.
So we do have um, school choice openings for the upcoming year and um, there is an annual vote required of the school committee to um, become a school choice district. And so um, we would propose that um, that we continue to um, accept students from school choice where we have, where we have openings that will not.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
And the second was Mark, or Mark first, quick, quickly. And just as Dr. Mewa said for comments, um, Ed Reform Law ninety-three made districts all school choice. But then they, you then make the vote and clarify what you need to. And I think you made it clear, Dr. Mewa? You made it clear about where the openings would be because they're about getting more. So any other comments?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think we heard earlier tonight why uh, why we really stole the virtues of school choice because we have a school that is very popular because we offer courses. We have, we still have athletics perform at a, at a decent level. And you know, the the fact, the fact is, is, as was just pointed out, we have you know, very good staff. Talked about the teachers, outrageous, uh, math teachers, math is the the number one program. Oh, I wish that was, I wish that was my number one program when I was at. But you know, fantastic, fantastic job that we do. And I, and I always bring out when somebody talks about the budget, I always say, well, you gotta be doing something right. Like almost three hundred kids come here from other districts. I mean, that's the proof of the pudding, really, as I see it. You boil it down to that.
Absolutely, right, Mark.
Ned, as well, sir.
I'm good.
You're good, okay. Um, any other problem? Roll call, please.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Daychamps?
Yes.
Mr. Will Lannan?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Yes.
Ms. Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wiegler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter? Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I think it's gonna be Ned.
Second. Ned, did you make a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?